What she said?
Hey, Stacy. That divorce should have been put on.
I saw it.
I haven't had a chance to review it, but...
I haven't either, but I did see that it came here.
Hopefully that...
Yeah, it should.
Hopefully what you need.
Uh, I hope.
All the information, appeal and all that kind of feeling is there.
No, you won't need to, because it's from last year, so...
We ask everyone to stand. We can call this city council meeting to order. Before we start, let's have a moment of silence. Thank you. At this time, we'll ask Councilman Todd Stone to lead us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Thank you. At this time, we have roll call.
Mr. Allen?
Here.
Mrs. Wilkins-Brent?
Here.
Mrs. Butcher-Comway?
Here.
Mrs. Hambrick?
Present.
Mr. Hampton?
Here.
Mr. Showalter?
Here.
Mr. Stone?
Here.
Mrs. Tuck?
Okay, thank you. Everyone, you had their minutes from the last meeting. Do I have a motion for the approval of the minutes?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion made by Todd Stone.
I'll second.
Second made by Ms. Conway. Are there further questions and/or discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise. Let the record reflect that the motion passed. We should have received the, excuse me, received of the check registry. If you have received those, please raise your hand. Let the record reflect that all has received it. At this time, we have public comments, and I just want to remind you about public comments. You have four minutes to state what your business would be. Please be mindful of that four minutes that we are going to allow to. Again, this is not question and answer, so, but you have a chance to make a statement to this council at this point. So, we have Ms. Anita Baltimore-Smith.
I'm quite sure everybody knows why I'm here. This is on the city council. And you know what I'm asking for? And I'm asking for a home, because I don't know what a new home feels like. I paid for one. I never got it. And that is the reason why I'm here. Because it was all the cover-up that was not made by your administration, but the administration before you all that didn't mind doing what they did. And I'm the one that suffered for it. I just want to be made whole. I'm not asking for any more or any less. I'm asking for what I paid for. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Baltimore-Smith. Next, we have Mr. A.J. Singleton, Georgetown Municipal Water Service Service, and M.H.A.P. Paving.
Yes, Your Honor. Mayor. I'm used to talking with a judge. Mayor Jenkins and members of the city council, my name is A.J. Singleton. I'm with Stahl Keenan Ogden in Lexington, Kentucky. I'm here on behalf of Flagship Communities, my client, with respect to its property, Sawyer Point Mobile Home Park. And in particular, the South Sewer Project, that is a collaborative, public-private project in which we are decommissioning some water treatment plants. We are addressing some runoff with cave-run watershed, and we are getting those residents in the Mobile Home Park on Georgetown Municipal Water sewer lines. There is a user agreement among the owners of the Mobile Home Park, the city, and Georgetown Municipal Water. The funding for this entire project is through a KIA loan of about $24 million, and that project is divided into three different groups. One of those parts of the project is something that actually my client, Georgetown Municipal, or excuse me, the Georgetown Mobile Home Park, is going to be paying that part of the loan for the improvements to the system on the Mobile Home Park. We are responsible for about $5.6 million of the 24 million. Now, as part of this project to run the lines, the sewer lines down the Mobile Home Park roads, Georgetown Municipal Water had to cut right down the middle of the road. And as a result of that, it's essentially destroyed the roads. It was part of the project. And the roads are to the point of being so bad that, as I understand it, school buses won't go down the road, because it's too bumpy, too impassable, et cetera. Prior to my client's involvement with this property, the previous owner simply said, coming out of receivership, hey, we just want you to pay for trenching, to basically put a Band-Aid over top of the roads. Now that we're involved, we want to make things right by the residents. And so, I think together, my client, the Municipal Water and Sewer and the city council can come to an understanding about how this can be done. Now, I know that Chase Acevedo is going to be up here a little bit later. He's on the agenda. Maybe he can answer some questions, provide some more specifics for you all. But this has always been a complex project. And when you go into a complex, complicated project like this, an infrastructure project, you make certain assumptions about how much things are going to cost. We're fortunate here that, at the end of the day, as we approach completion, our part of the project, the Mobile Home Parks project, is coming in about $800,000 under budget. And I think the entire project is coming on close to almost $2 million under budget. Looking then at the cost of doing the roads more appropriately for the quality of life for these residents, it's still going to come under that savings. And so, as a result, at the end of the day, it's going to be no additional cost to the city, no additional cost to the Municipal Water and Sewer Group. And again, we're the ones that are going to be paying for that. Now, I've heard various folks have concerns about private benefit, that these are private roads. Well, first of all, yes, they are private roads. This has always been a collaborative, private, public project. It would not have worked without this collaboration. There's this user agreement that we have that ties us in with you guys. There's also been any number of state agencies that have had to approve this. KIA, for example, Department of Water, everyone's on board. And had this not been the type of private-public collaboration, this project probably never would have happened. What we're trying to do is make the roads serviceable for the community, to improve their quality of life. We're the ones, at the end of the day, that are going to be paying for it. It will take approval, blessing, what have you, of both the city council and the Georgetown Municipal Water and Sewer Board to make these sort of commitments. But again, this is coming under budget still. There's probably going to need to be a change to the operating, or the user agreement, or a change order. But regardless, this is going to take your all's blessing. And we think together, you, the water board, and we can do right by the residents. I appreciate your time and your consideration. Thank you all for your service.
Thank you. Mr. Tim Thompson, we schedule for the fire prevention parade.
Mayor, council, because of the weather, we had to reschedule the fire prevention parade, unfortunately. But our Assistant Chief of Prevention has worked with Lieutenant Wilson at Scott County, and November 9th is the date they came up with. It is a Thursday. Since the time change will happen, it's going to be at 6:30, line up at 5:45, if we can get your all's blessing.
Motion?
Okay, motion is made. Okay, so, motion is made by Ms. Hambrick, second by Ms. Brent. Are there further discussion and/or questions? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise. Let the record reflect that this motion carried, so it'll be on November 9th at 6:30.
Yes, sir. Thank you all.
Thank you. Counsel, if you'll remember to turn your microphones on so the broadcast catches you for when you actually say things more than "aye."
Ah, kids. All right. Next, we have me, I have some public, excuse me, comments. First, we have a proclamation for Extra Mile Day. Madam Clerk?
Whereas Georgetown, Kentucky is a community which acknowledges that a special viability exists within the entire community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personal effort, volunteerism, and service. And whereas Georgetown, Kentucky is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contributions to the community by giving themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas Georgetown, Kentucky is a community which chooses to light, to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community who go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. And whereas Georgetown, Kentucky acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create 500 extra-mile cities in America and is proud to support Extra Mile Day on November the 1st, 2023. Now therefore, I, Bernie Deakins, Mayor of Georgetown, Kentucky, do hereby proclaim November 1, 2023, to be Extra Mile Day. I urge everyone in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but to also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organizations, families, community, country, or world a better place.
All right. A couple of updates here. On the, there have been discussions talking about Bridge Street, and we're doing, still doing some update work with that. And we're going to get a group to kind of look at some possibilities with that. And once we finalize those possibilities, we're going to bring it to council for you to see what we're going to do at that particular time. Also, this has come to light, you know, well, way back, we had the signage issue with the cemetery, but that has been resolved, and we have worked diligently with a group to actually update that and got it going and in the right direction, and we should have that ready to go soon as we can get with them and talk about the additional information that we might need. But more so is that we had a meeting with the Historical Society, and they're going to do a a monument, actually illustrating the history of that graveyard and talking about the reason, talking about the people that's buried in it, and so on. So, once we get all that information together, we'll alert the media and everyone else that we're going to have a day where we're going to invite the newspaper and others to come and have a formal dedication, and then do that, and put it in a way where it illustrates the importance of that graveyard, but also the reason why those people fought and died for, which the freedoms which we now uphold. All right. This morning, Judge Cuffin and I went to a recovery, ready recovery, where we're talking about the drug and recovery for people who are having issues. And we had a site visitor today that came in, and they were very much impressed with all the things that was going on with that. But the main thing I want to say, that the spearheaded person for that was Corey Council, which was the person that we hired on staff here for the city, and he has took this, and we are, the reason why we are where we are now is because of his leadership, his dedication, his hard work, and along with the others that took part in that, and I am waiting to hear back from them. So, we are very, very hopeful, and we are very optimistic that this will probably move forward for us. So, that's, that's only Danville and Bull County was the only one that I know of that has been approved by the state. So, hopefully, we'll be number two. And we had a meeting today with the White Flag Shelter. As you know, we are trying to get a green, a group, those that are needing out of the cold. And as you know, as we start pushing cold weather, we want to make sure that our citizens who do not have a home, or does not have appropriate shelter, can do that. There will be maybe some cost adjustments because of what we want to do with a trailer and so on. But the city and county are going in together with this, and once we work out the details of this, we'll bring this back to council. All right. Trick or treat, for those of you all who like to go trick-or-treating. So, if you all, if you want to go, it'll be Tuesday, no, excuse me, October 31st, and it's going to be from 6:00 to 8:00. Also downtown, they're going to have a spooktacular. So, that's for the downtown business people, and they're going to do it from, on the 31st, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
All right. Mayor, you mind if I add one more comment?
Sure.
I know council, everybody should have received an email from Megan Miller about open enrollment coming up, and we're going to have a photographer on site, a professional photographer. We've talked a lot about making improvements to our website and making sure that it represents the important business we're doing here. So I think one of the most important things there is upgrading photos of both elected officials and appointed officials. And I think at some point, we'll put more content as well in terms of bios and things like that. But this photographer is going to be on site 9:00 a.m., between 9:00 a.m. and 2:00 p.m. on Wednesday the 1st, and Friday the 3rd. So, I think it helps everybody get buy-in if they write their name and a time on a piece of paper. So I'm going to start with Mr. Shalter down there, and if the council could sign up, so that if you, if you're not there, we can call you and say, hey, don't forget, you know, dress in your finest and get your photo taken for the website. So I'll pass this down and ask if you guys will get something on your calendars, so that we don't have seven pictures and one council member's out to dry. So, thank you guys for that.
Where are we supposed to go?
It will be, it says it in the email, I think it's at GMWSS, now that you say that. But I will confirm that.
I think that's what it is.
And it was November 1st from 9:00 to 2:00, and then what was the second date?
Third.
November 3rd to 9:00. And when I pass the sheet, you'll see the two options, and if you could just kind of sign up for one, that'd be great. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
You're welcome. Everybody needs to get their mugshot made, so we're going to do it. All right, moving right along, at this time, GMWSS. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm ahead of myself, my bad. How about, we're going to go with the council committee reports, and a reminder that you should have received, council, a, the minutes, draft of minutes from what you're going to hear tonight. I'm asking again, when you do these reports, just give us the highlight, and the draft reports that you have in your hand now, you, of course, at your next meeting, you will have to formally accept those minutes, and then you will give them to Tracy here, and then she can record those. All right? So at this time, we have Public Works.
That'd be me. Robert Bruin brought up the subject of the leaf and the wood chip compost at the community garden. And since the community garden is going to be Phase 3 of Lanes Around Business Park, we're going to take this leaf and brush and everything to cardome next to the treatment plant in the next year or so, that's where it's going to be. Also, Royal Springs Park is, Public Works is now going to take over the maintenance of Royal Springs Park. And Eddie Hightower reported that we were finished with the sidewalk replacement with the funds for this go-round. He and Stacy will be working on a budget for future funds if the council wants to do that program again. Let's see. Oh, Eddie and Robert met with a member of the state about the intersection of Colony Boulevard, and the state was okay with the city looking into changing the intersection, but they may have to be some permits that have to be done. And the state's also, the state also agreed to let the city do some tree trimming along West Main Street, have talked to the property owner, and make them aware. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, traffic?
Thank you, Mayor. We had, no parking signs have been removed from Erica Drive, that was on the agenda. The Episcopal Church at Clinton and South Broadway needed a handicap spot that was already there, just needed to be re-marked. So Eddie was going to get with Robert to have it repainted. Had speeding issues on Estelle Court. We're going to look at sending a letter to the school to have them send out a letter to remind the parents of the safety issue. Had a resident from Cherry Blossom that came in and talked about speeding from Spyglass and Cherry Blossom, coming from Connector Row. The police department's going to try to do a little more patrol in the afternoon to help curb this. Also discussed, no parking signs on Cherry Hill, that was on our list of things to be addressed. Was brought up about potentially having, at Southern Elementary, having the street closed down by barricades for school traffic to be let out. It was brought up that the school system should look at potentially hiring crossing guards. Police department had it for a long time, but just one of the things that the school system may have more luck at getting residents involved with that. Looked at possibly putting up public parking signs for the lot on East Washington Street at Mulberry. Eddie said that's a work in progress. Also looking at noise breaks for the Paine's Crossing Neighborhood Association between their neighborhood and the bypass. Was brought up about parking issues on East Washington Street during the farmer's market for the buses that come in there. So they're going to be looking, working with the farmer's market on that. And then Michelle Carlisle came in and talked about the entrance for the Amen House, and that it would first need to go to planning and zoning to get approved, and then it would come back to us. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. Finance?
Okay, we met on October 16th, all were present, and we had two citizens there. Called meeting in order, and the meeting, the minutes from the previous meeting were approved. On the agenda was the fiscal '24 budget amendment, number one. We did delay some of the previous approved projects from the general fund, the business park fund, and the full amendment is going to be on the agenda tonight to be voted on. I'm sorry, be read. Discussed the Central Bank Master Treasury Agreement, Services Agreement. This will reduce our target balance from 2 million to 250,000, will earn 0.01% more interest. And also, we discussed this Stockyard Bank CD renewal. The net gain server replacement is also on the agenda tonight, that will be discussed as well. And we discussed the Civic Plus Webmaster Service. What this would do is provide a Webmaster service and provide some training. Discuss Public Works dump truck need. We are currently exploring other options with the current trucks before making a final recommendation. And other discussions, the DF Consultant RFQ, the compensation study, RFP is within budget, and continuing to explore the tower space leases. And finally, fiscal agent candidates made their presentations.
Thank you. Now, there were others, reports. Now, at this time, Chase, you will come up from Georgetown Municipal Water and Sewer Service. The first one is the Water Solution Unlimited, $12,375.
Mayor, would you, would you like me to, are there any questions related to the public comment by AJ and his team?
Council, you may, I got questions? Go on, Wes.
As far as what GMWSS was required to do, that was done correctly per the agreement.
Well, that part of the work is not done yet. We're trying to get some consensus. There is a contractual method for pavement restoration within the park, and this has been a request from Flagship Properties that we do it different, and we changed the scope. And none of that work has started yet.
So, is this going to be something that would be done before roughly Thanksgiving, or is it going to be all through the winter?
We need, that's part of the question, is that this needs to be a timely decision, because if in fact, the restoration, whether it's just what's currently in the contract, or whether it's a different, a change in scope, we have until the asphalt plants close for the season. And if the decision's not made, and we don't, we don't move forward one way or the other, then the gravel that's out there, that's just in the, what's there right now, will need to be maintained through the, through the winter, until asphalt plants reopen, and that's a cost. Also, as I'm sure our partners here in Flagship will say, that the current state of that, you know, while we are trying to maintain it through a contractor, it is, it's not the best driving surface, obviously, that it's not restored one way or the other.
And as far as the scope of work that's being requested from Flagship, and the client is under budget, I think I heard 800,000, the project's under budget, 2 million, what's the scope of work that's being requested to be done?
So...
And the cost of that?
Yes, I can give you that, and I think AJ gave a high-level view upon that. So, the project with, with both our part and the Mobile Home Parks part, Flagship's stake, is, we're right now projecting that at just under 2 million in savings. And that's based on a number of factors that, that I can kind of put something together to show you where that savings came from. But the portion that has to be funded by Flagship Properties, the current, AJ actually was a little low on that, it's currently projected, their portion, 887,002, $887,000, so just under 900,000. As contracted, per the construction contract, the trench width restoration is at 393,000. The change of scope, it would increase that, and it's on paper, you would take that part out, and then you would add back. But what they're asking to increase is $697,000. And, and change. I'm using round numbers there.
So just talking process here, I mean, I know, Todd, you asked that question, but basically, if the council were to be interested in doing this, the time sensitivity is an issue. This conversation has been ongoing for quite a while. I know the council, many of you, we talked about this, I guess it was a couple months ago at this point, but at that time, we didn't have those numbers. Numbers aren't, you know, set in stone yet, but pretty, pretty close in terms of cost savings and the cost to do the revised scope. So, I mean, I'm not saying a decision has to be made tonight, I'm just letting the council know that time is kind of of the essence at this point. And I know that this conversation has come to the water board, they have not made a vote on it or anything. It would have to be approved by all parties to the user agreement, and the three parties, as AJ mentioned, are the city, the utility, and the property owner. So if there are any questions about the user agreement, I know some council members were here to approve that agreement, some weren't. I know that everybody, either just their community narratives or council involvement, everybody's pretty aware of the environmental and humanitarian issue that the project was, was abating. So I just wanted to catch that point, that the council and the board would have to approve this to move forward, either within this paving season, or it would be in the spring.
Because it's looking like mid-November is when the temperature falls out, and it's doing the 45-day outlook, but...
And there is an associated cost with maintaining just what's there through the winter, so...
Would this go before the board first? Devin?
It can. The board has, I think, and I don't think I'm speaking out of turn, Chase, you can speak to this more, but I think, I think the board wants the council to take the lead on this one. I think they want some, I think they want to hear from the council about whether there's an appetite for it from the council. Is that an accurate characterization?
That's correct.
Okay.
Me personally, I'd have to go and see it, so I'll make some time to go see it, the area.
I know the roads in the past that I've been up there, the roads haven't been the best to begin with, so I'm sure they've not gotten any better.
I think it's, it's all part of the conversation as far as what was the existing condition before construction started, where has the construction traffic and activities made things worse, and how are the different methods, what's contractual currently, and then what, what has been requested by Flagship? You know, what ultimately, what's the right way to go from here? Per the user agreement, per the project funding, there's a lot, there's a lot of different discussion points that I've heard from, from the board, and just thinking about this from our standpoint, from the contractor, his concerns, and obviously, a number of conversations over a number of months with representatives of Flagship.
All right. No more questions? Okay. Now, the Water Solution Unlimited, $12,375.
Mayor, if it's all right, the first three are purchase orders, if I could run through those?
Yes, please.
Water Solutions Unlimited, $12,375, that is for 4,500 gallons of sodium hypochlorite, that is at the water plant, that is our disinfectant, one of our disinfectant chemicals, that is a budgeted purchase, and it's done through our unit price contract that's bid once a year, as you see in the packet. Also, we're currently, as we always call and get quotes on our chemicals these days as well, to make sure we're getting the very best price, not just the price from last summer. Item two, or I'm sorry, item B, that is pay application number 31 to Judy Construction for Plant Number One, upgrade and expansion, that's $651,981.01. That's for work completed in September. I apologize, I didn't get you the table that I normally send out on the day of council, but that does take us through as far as our budget, we're 61% complete, that's composed of, work complete is at 38%, stored materials, we're at 23%. So those are starting out, starting to level out a little bit, as far as schedule to beneficial occupancy of the facility, we're at 62%. The last purchase order is Enterprise Fleet Management, that's $51,933.05. It's for a 2023 Ram, trade's been four by four. As with our previous purchase order, I believe it was last meeting or the meeting before, this only gets us an order, does not guarantee us a vehicle, but it does at least get us to put the order in. This was budgeted last year, as similar to the other truck. So we've tried to buy it multiple times, still have not been able to get it, but it does at least get it to, get the order put in. This is a budgeted purchase to replace one of our fleet vehicles in distribution. So I'll take any questions you have on those first three purchase orders.
Do I have a motion?
I have a question. What are you, I'm sorry, what are you saying on chemical costs? Is it staying, is it rising or coming down?
It's, it seems like it's kind of leveled out, but it really depends on the week that we call, and the chemical.
Motion, Mayor?
Motion's made by Mr. Allen?
Second, Mayor.
Second made by Mr. Hampton. Are there further questions and/or comment? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise. Let the record reflect that the motion passed. Next, D-led service line inventory informational update.
Item D and item F are the same thing, so I'll do that at the end. I apologize, I think I sent that wrong to Tracy for the agenda. If I could jump into item E. As discussed in our numerous rate presentations this winter, we did pursue and receive an appropriation of $5 million through the Community Projects Fund through Congressman Barr's office, that is administered through the US EPA. And while we've received the allocation, we still have to complete the compliance survey through the EPA, and that's specifically a pre-award checklist, compliance review. And that's related to policies governing non-discrimination, tracking of demographic data, having policy related to hearing and vision impaired customers and the barriers that they face, making sure that we can provide for that, for them and their needs. And while we have policies that address all of those things already, it's not that we're not doing that, the EPA elects you to use their policies with their language. And I will point out, the only one we don't currently do, we do not track demographic data, but we are going to, we've been given the go-ahead that we can use census data for, for that compliance metric. But they have asked us to update our policies with their specific language that I included in the packet. The board has approved these, has undertaken legal... has approved these, has undertaken legal review, we have no problem including these, again, we're already doing this stuff, it's just essentially different wording that will, that will go into our policy manual. The question was, we've adopted these policies, but since we're receiving this money through the city, should the city have these policies reflected as well? So, we didn't, we don't really have a clear answer on that, but we just figured, better to be safe, so we have asked, we're asking council to read and adopt this resolution that's included, that recognizes these policies from the U.S. EPA, and that is so we can get that funding that we have applied for and put that toward the treatment plan project.
Do I have a motion?
Motion, Mayor.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Stone, second made by Ms. Hamburg, are there questions and/or comment?
So, this is just going into the general fund for the water treatment plant that's currently, this five thousand dollars?
Well, it's going specifically, and we actually, based on items that are already done, we will do this in one draw request as soon as EPA approves and, and says we're able to draw on the money, instead of normally making multiple pay requests, since we're so far into this project, and we have worked with EPA to identify, we figured out a way to do exactly five million dollars worth of essentially equipment purchases that we've already purchased-
Okay.
-and are being counted as stored materials on the project, we will get this approved, get through the compliance review, and we will make one, one draw for this.
Okay.
One time.
Any other further questions?
Yeah, so the money's available based on the policy revisions and compliance to the policies?
There's a long checklist and we're going through it, I will, I will update you when we, when we, as soon as we're able to make that draw, but this is, I think the, I think this is our last, our last, last box on the list to check.
Great.
Any other questions? We had a motion made, properly second, and we had questions and concerns, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise, let the record reflect that this motion passed. Now, the Lead Service Line Inventory, informational update?
Thank you, Mayor, just thought that with this being such an important item of business for the utility, and something that we're putting a lot of resources toward right now, that I thought it was appropriate to, to bring this, just an update to the council tonight, and this is related to a federal rule that's impacting all water utilities across the nation, this is not just a Kentucky part, through Division of Water, this is not just a Georgetown municipal effort, this is every water utility effort, and, and I've had some calls from council members, I know Councilwoman Butcher Conway called, Councilwoman Tackett called, asked about these, I think from customers probably reaching out, your constituents reaching out to you as part of this lead and copper rule update, we're knocking on doors and going into houses, so we're getting to know our customers and, but I thought you all needed to be informed, so that's the reason, not asking for any action, any consideration of any action tonight, so. Next slide, please. Start with just a bit of history, nineteen ninety-one, the U.S. EPA enacted a rule, this was the lead and copper rule, this was for all utilities, and it was to establish goals related to maximum contaminant levels in drinking water systems, specific to contaminants that are associated with lead pipe in your system and lead and copper fittings in your system. Next slide. Minor updates have been done to this rule between ninety-one and today, but in twenty twenty-one, we saw the first comprehensive update to this, to this rule, and that came in, in the form of the Lead and Copper Rule Revisions, LCRR, and that happened in December of twenty-one, and, and the goal was further to, further reduction of lead exposure and contaminant exposure from those pipe, the pipe and pipe fittings that've been used for a number of years in our industry. Focus, as, as I've shown there on the slide, we wanted to identify where we would see these concentrations of contaminants in the system due to where these pipes and fittings were used more frequently, part of this rule is strengthening drinking water treatment requirements, replacing lead service lines, that's really what we're going to get into tonight is the lead service line inventory, it's, it's going to cause us to change how we do sampling, we do hundreds of samples every day to ensure our water is safe to drink, and this is going to change how we go about doing that, we're also talking, there's a component of this rule about better communication to our customers, and then there's a heavy focus on really making sure that we're protecting children and that there's strong language and, and part of this rule, it's related to areas of the system that have schools and daycares in, in close proximity. Next slide, please. What does this mean, what does this mean for our customers, what does this mean for our organization? Our first compliance deadline is October of next year, and, so it's just under a year away, that's, that's, that's hard to believe, but first part of that is the service lateral inventory, and this is, the, the knowns and unknowns, this is coming directly word for word from Division of Water, the service line inventory, we know we have to do that, we know we're going to have to update our sampling program and look at lead replacement plan, and we also know that we've got to increase our customer communication, and we're working on that as well. What is unknown, again, directly per Division of Water, is, I'll, I'll point out that one part is the replacement rate, when we find lead, both on the public or the private side, the customer-owned portion of lines, when will that have to be replaced, will it have to be replaced, and who pays for it? Again, that's still unknown at this point, and we anticipate that we will know more about that next year when they are going to do another update of this rule, that will be the lead and copper rule improvement, so we've got LCR, LCRR, and then the LCRI, so I imagine that I'll be updating you again next year when we know what the final rule is. Next slide, please. So, what is the inventory, what are we doing in the, in the field or at the office? First, just pointing out, and I, I found this, just, this is a good graphic, represents our, our, our system well, as far as who owns what, and this was taken from another utility, but you've got our, on the right-hand side, our main line that we own that runs in the street or in the utility strip, it can run through a line, a yard or a private property with easement, then we've got our portion extending in gray over to the yellow box, that's our portion of the service line, we own that, we own the meter box that's in yellow and the meter, and then we always try to set that meter box on the property line, and then there in blue going from the meter box to the structure, that is the customer's portion of the service line, that is what the customer owns. So, there's two methods, I'm sorry, let me go, what we have to do is verify the pipe material there and let Division of Water know what each line segment is made out of, so there's two methods that we can do this with, and we're using both, first is a records verification, and so we can look at building permits, we can look at record drawings or GIS, we can look at our customer history data when service is established, if we can show a building record anytime after June of nineteen eighty-eight, that is when Division of Plumbing and all plumbing codes no longer allowed lead fitting and lead pipe, then we can mark that down in our inventory as non-led, and that's, that's a good thing, that's what we want. So, the records part is where we get the most bang for our buck, we can do that from the office, from the computer screen, and we don't have to be out, out in the field punching holes in the ground and knocking on doors, so that's the first method. Second method is if we can't find any of those things to verify, that's when we've got to go to the field, and we've got to, again, per the rule, we have to show, verify the, the pipe materials at two different points on the property, so we're considering the meter box, at the meter box, one point, and then where the, the privately owned service line enters the house, where you've got your, your master shut off, that is our second point. So, we're checking that in the field at the meter box and checking it at the structure, that means we're dropping door hangers, we're knocking on doors, we're meeting with customers, and so if the customer is, is aware of this, then they've been letting us in, we meet with them, we show them what we're looking for, we go in, we identify the, the pipe material, take a picture of it, and then we're gone, and we can mark that down in our inventory. Obviously, again, the records part is much less labor intensive, and we're able to do that a little quicker, and I'm going to show you later in the presentation how we're coming along, what progress we're making. So, next slide, please. Within our work order system that our staff have on their tablets when they're going in the field or at their computer workstation in the, in the office, for each property, we have a work order that is for office or for field, and so I'm just going to kind of walk you through what they're seeing on the screen when they do each one of these inventories for each customer service, service line. Next slide, please. So, either way, we, we've got to establish the customer's address, and, and then we're, we all, everyone is initialing which survey they've, they've completed, next slide, please. And then we pull up and, and we're verifying literally the pipe materials, and this list comes directly from Division of Water through the rule, so we have plastic, lead, copper, non-led is what we can use if, if we can identify, again, that it's, if the construction happened post-June nineteen eighty-eight, we can hit non-led there. The bad thing is if we can't identify something, if something is, whether we don't do it in the field or we just don't get to it, it goes under unknown, and unknown gets classified as your worst case, it's classified as lead, so it's, we, we don't want any unknowns in our inventory. Next slide, please. Also have to verify our pipe diameter, and, and as I said, our, our crews, whether it's in the engineering department in the office, or whether it is in the field with our distribution crews that are rotating, working on this, this is the information they have to, have to have, everything, whether it's a building document on the record search, or whether it is a field verification with a photo, trying to get a picture of everything for documentation as we move forward. We go to our next slide, please.
Chase, can you, if at all possible, I should have asked you when you were on the screen, it's two, it's two slides back. So, let's just say you're, you're in, one of your employees is in my house, and if they, if they check lead, does the property owner see that at this point, or is that information kept?
No, I, I think the property owners have been right there, none of this is something that we're, we're trying to hide-
Okay.
...in a way like that, I mean, I, I'm guessing if we're in their house, and, and I, I would be perfectly, I, I've not gone out and done, done one of these yet, I'm going to, but I have not yet, I'm assuming if, if somebody's granting us access, they're walking with us and, and seeing.
Okay, so they would see, more than likely, they would see that-
Yeah, and so I'm going to get to in a minute is, is just, you know, whether, depending on who our staff is that's looking at this, when they go through, along with this, is we have pictures, so they, they have, and there's actually, whether it's a scratch test or a magnet test, they have methodology for identifying it, especially if the pipe's painted dusty dirty, there, there's different methods that we can accurately identify. And, and like I said, there's a, there's a picture guide, and I'm going to go over in a second why that's important, actually, this next slide. As I said, one of the components of this rule is better communication with our customers, so we also have created this, this is on our website, and this was sent out in a hard copy with your bills in June and August of this year, this flyer, just a very brief overview of what we're doing and what our goals are, but it has the QR code and a link, it's, the link is on the website, if your customer, your constituent's not comfortable with somebody coming in their house, we will do the inventory at the meter, they can use their phone, their electronic device, tablet, whatever, they can scan that QR code or hit the link, and then it will come up and it walks them step by step how to identify their own, their own line, where it comes through their house, where to go, how you can either use a magnet, scratch on it, and then they can take the picture and do that themselves if they're not comfortable with us entering the house. So, that, that'll go where, when, when they do that, there's a picture guide, there's, there's, you start with just selecting your address, verifying your, that customer, and then going through those steps and submitting a picture. Any questions there? So, next slide, these next two are just, obviously, this, this is from the picture guide, that's plastic, then the next one, copper, so, but we've got a picture of each one and how to accurately put in the, the pipe here. Next slide, please. So, what's our current status, how are we doing so far? As of October twenty-three, over half of the surveys complete, that's based on just over eighty-five hundred confirmations completed via the records method, and that's, we've got just under sixteen thousand total services, services, total customers, so we're, just through that records part, we're able to eliminate over half of our, our customer, half of the, the inventory, we don't have to go out and, and pothole and check meter boxes, so very pleased with that progress. In the field, we actually have just over sixteen hundred surveys completed, that does include four hundred and fifty customer surveys where they've done it on their own. So, again, the more record surveys and the more customer surveys, the better for the organizations, because again, that's, that's devoted resources, instead of doing preventative maintenance or fixing water lines or other work, we're doing this right now, we're, we're devoting multiple staff every day. Just as kind of monthly rate snapshot, September of this year, we completed three hundred ninety-four surveys, that's, that's all-inclusive. Obviously, if they're in a neighborhood with easy access, everything's mode, they can find the, the meters easily, and there's not a lot of driving in between, the rate, their, their rate is obviously going to be well higher, if they're spread out one location to location, their productivity is obviously going to go down. Next slide, please. Just from a mapping standpoint, this comes from our, our dashboard of our, our work order software, everything in green is what is complete to date, everything in orange or blue, and obviously, you can zoom in on this and it gets a lot easier to see, but I thought this was just the clusters was, was, was worth putting in, anything in blue and orange, I'm sorry, is partially complete, that might mean that we have the customer side done, or maybe we have the, the meter side done, but not both, so, once we get the ver- proper verification that we need, those go to green, everything in white is what is remaining. Next slide, please. So, as I said, inventory is due October sixteenth of next year, our goal is to submit September sixteenth, just so we leave ourselves some, some legal room there, I don't think we'll have a lot of problem meeting that goal, and we submit this to Division of Water through their portal, it's a, we export it from our work order software spreadsheet, that's what gets uploaded to their website and, and checks the box that we will complete this. That's all I have on the currently LCRR, but I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
I have a couple of questions. Okay, Mayor. This, not knowing the fiscal end of this for the customer or the city is concerning to me, and so we're waiting on the, the federal government to be able to come up with a comprehensive plan, including, let's say a customer has lead in their home and they can't afford to change it out?
All questions, we're waiting on answers, and we have been, over the past two years, all utilities through our organizations, our member organizations, we've been working, offering comment, meeting with regulators, and I think it'll be very interesting to see what happens next year, just if, for no other reason than it is a election year and-
Yeah.
...generally, a, a rule with that, those sweeping implications, will that happen? I, I don't know the answer. I think that some that, and how utilities are dealing with this at this point, some are trying to get ahead and they're going ahead and replacing anything and everything that they have to at their costs, some are doing cost-sharing programs, similar to what- that they have to at their costs, some are doing cost-sharing programs, similar to what Lexington had when all the sun pumps had to be redirected off of
Yeah.
The, the sanitary sewer, and all of that had to be separated, they did a cost-sharing. And then some are just saying, we got to wait and see how this is going to be funded, because again, this isn't, you said city and, and our customers, this is not just us, this is everyone in the country.
Absolutely.
Anyone under the purview of the EBITDA.
Yeah. A couple of other questions. If, if we only look at those two connection points at the meter and at the point of the cutoff, if people have done other plumbing under the sinks and behind the toilets and, I don't know, I'm not a water person per se, are, are we missing some possible lead?
I think that the focus more so where we initially were worried that, that there was going to be a focus on internal plumbing is really, we're, we're focused on the actual service line. And the question could be is, could a repair have been made
Right.
In the middle, but between the two points?
Right.
Right now, the, the rule is stating that we want two-point verification, we don't expect you to dig up the whole thing. That's also where the sampling requirements are going to make a difference, and that if there still is lead in the system, it's going to show up on the sampling, and we're, based on where it is in the, the system, that's where we can dedicate future searches, for lack of a better word.
So why is the word copper in there?
Because copper fittings, kind of, I think lead is more the focus, but copper fittings can have just as bad of impacts based on corrosion, and, and as they corrode, that goes into the water.
Okay.
I think the, the good, good part of this for Georgetown is, I think, most of the development, I'm sorry, Mayor, happened post, I mean, we're, we're really focused on the downtown, the historic areas, most of our development is post-88, so I think that we don't have a lot compared to other utilities, and for most of what we've seen so far, I was looking at some results today, very little lead, we found very little in our system.
Well, congratulations on all of the person hours that have gone into surveying all of this so far. It's taking away from a lot of other things I know that could be done, but it, it is very important for health. Is the college going through the same process? Are we going over there? Because that would be a huge
They're going to have to. I've not looked at the status of, of where the college is on the survey right now.
Okay.
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you.
Can I ask how many in the older sections of town you've, just a ballpark, have you done a few of them, some of them?
I'd have to pull back up and just make a guess on that map, which I can't really see, but I can't get you that information.
No, you don't, well, I'm, I'm just wanting to get on the list, because my house is 100 years old, so I'm certain I'm in trouble with lead, so. And Tom.
Can we get the PowerPoint sent to us?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Chase, just a, one last from me. I know this has taken a lot of man-hours to do. Are you currently using your present staff to do that, or have you hired anybody?
We have not gone to any consultants or contractors, we're doing this all in-house so far.
Is that impacting other areas?
Absolutely. Mostly probably engineering staff and distribution staff. We're dedicating anywhere from two to four people per day. Instead of working on something else, they're, they're working on this. End of question. Thank you.
Chase, have you done home inspections already? How were those individuals notified of the inspection?
Door hangers, we'll go out, put door hangers out before we start on a certain neighborhood, and then just knock it on the door.
What's been some of the feedback from the customers once you've been in?
It's gone actually a lot smoother than I anticipated. One of the things, we have tried to pair some of our customer service staff, our customer service staff is all female, and we've tried to let them get out to the field because they're going to be the ones on the front line when they get questions, people coming in, and I guess really the only feedback that we've received was, one, they had some ideas on how to do things more efficiently, and, that were worked into the protocol, and two is that some of the customers were much more comfortable with a female staff member coming into the home versus male staff member.
And are you going subdivision by subdivision? Is there a plan for that? And has that been communicated to, like, to the newspaper or social media?
Mainly our website, our Facebook, and I'll be the first to say that I doubt many people look at either one. And part of the reason why I asked Mayor if I could have this, this part of the time tonight is to let you all know so, so that you all can talk to your constituents.
Is that scheduled?
I'm sure our newspapers are taking good notes.
Yeah. Is that schedule available?
I, I don't know that there's necessarily a schedule, I think our distribution crew is just pretty much picking a neighborhood and, and going one after the other. We could probably look into trying to establish something.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mayor.
Chase, thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent work. All right, we next, we have number nine, Chief Administrative Officer, a second reading of the Zone Change Orders, 529 East Washington Street, sponsor Sonia Wilkins Brent and Millie Conway Butcher, Billy, excuse me, Millie Butcher Conway.
An ordinance changing the zoning classification of certain real property containing approximately .56 plus or minus acres located at 529 East Washington Street, Georgetown, Scott County, Kentucky, from R2 to P1. Summary, one, rezones approximately 0.56 plus or minor acres located at 529 East Washington Street, Georgetown, Scott County, Kentucky, from R2 to P1. Two, provides for appeal of inconsistent law, severability of provisions, and effective data comp passage and publication. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office, 629 North Broadway, Georgetown, Kentucky, 40324, or at www georgetown ky dot gov. Public news and read for the first time October 9, 2023. Publicly read the second time October 23, 2023.
Do I have a motion?
I do. I must make a motion, please.
Motion made by Ms. Conway. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second. Made by Ms. Brent. Are there further questions and/or comments? At this time, Madam Clerk, we have a roll call.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Showalter?
Yes.
Mr. Hampton?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamburg?
Yes.
Mrs. Butcher Conway?
Yes.
Mrs. Wilkins Brent?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Let the record reflect that this motion carried. Next, municipal order approving new server.
Yeah, so this, as mentioned in the committee reports, this went to the Finance Committee last week. You know, the, I've talked to a couple council members about this as well, but one of the goals of hiring the IT liaison position was to more appropriately budget for capital needs associated with hardware and software and all of our tech-related vendors. Historically, we've kind of taken that on a as-needed basis, and we've not taken a very measured planning approach. So that's one thing that, that Sarah, through her role, is working on. She's working on kind of having an inventory of all servers, firewalls, switches, and things like that that would require replacement as their life cycles end. So like I mentioned, with, with a dedicated person in that role, I think the council will appreciate that more intentional approach. Unfortunately, we're not there yet, and so the growing pains of that include a, a pretty significant municipal order cost that will be included in a future budget amendment. And speaking with Sarah, and I know I've, I've included a memo in front of you all, just kind of detailing the timeline and, and how this has transpired, but according to Sarah, our, our biggest growing pains after approval of this, this project are, are kind of behind us, everything's in pretty good order at that point, there will still be some, some recommendations coming, but nothing that's significant, we'll have everything pretty well in order. So Stacy and I can, can do our best to answer any questions that, that anyone has, but this, this server, as noted in the memo, it's end of life, and end of life to me just means, you know, oh, we can't get maintenance or whatever under our existing contract, but it's also, it's an exposure, and it's a, it's a security risk, so this is a, a pretty time-sensitive project. So like I said, any, any questions or comments in general on how we're utilizing the IT liaison role, or anything that, that you all would like to see, I'm glad to take those.
Just a comment, this is not a budgeted item.
Correct.
And we're looking at $197,000. And I asked a question, this is going to be a temporary, temporary location where the City Hall is currently, and when it moves, my question was, what was the cost of that? And I got a response of up to, somewhere around $8,000 when it moves to the new City Hall. And then the other question I had was about the SQL server license, that cost could be $10,000 to $12,000 in addition, so.
So all that licensing?
Yes.
Those are great questions. All of that licensing is always outside the scope of this contract, and those costs will vary based on, you know, whether different software mechanisms or programs can live on the same server, or whether they have to be spread out among our various servers. So there is a cost associated with that, and we'll, we'll have more information on that moving forward, especially because we'll know how many users need City Works, or how many users need Tracy's tax software, for example. So that will be an additional cost that will be budgeted. And the cost of the move, moving the server from City Hall, it, it now lives at West Clinton, at the City Engineers Office, so that move was about $8,000, but part of that move, there, there were a number of other components to that project, so I, I think that's probably a pretty good estimate on moving it back to City Hall, but there might be some additional considerations and fewer components to that project, but we'll, we'll keep you up to speed. Sarah is actively engaged with the engineering and architect teams and the construction management team to make sure that, that all of those conversations are happening, and that hopefully, come the next budget cycle, we'll, we'll have all those costs factored in before moving back in.
And I, and my point there is that we're looking at $225,000, probably minimal, and it is needed, I know it's needed, but then a couple council meetings ago, we had the EMS building, $1.3 million over, so cost is continuing to go up, just the need for recurring revenue. That's, that's my whole point there, we just have to continue to look for the recurring revenue.
All right, and one thing I want to say, hats off to our, to Sarah who has jumped in, and I'll tell you what, by having her on board with all this, it's made, you know, could be a real issue, you know, where are we to navigate this with more efficiency by having her in that place? So that's, that's a good thing for us. Okay, so do I have a motion?
No.
Motion's made by Mr. Hampton.
Second.
Second, made by Ms. Hamburg. Are there further questions and/or concerns? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say likewise. Let the motion, let this, record reflect that the motion carried. Next, we have the City Hall Project Update.
Yes, so Council in front of you, you'll have a memo from Lord Ike Sargent, our project architects. Eddie's office actually submitted some notes as well, and I think most of those are reflected in this memo, so I just went ahead and printed this out for everybody. I won't go through it line by line, I think one of the main, I think you can see a lot, a lot of what's happening. You can see the construction fence out back, you can see that the, the wells for the geothermal have been drilled, all windows are removed, you can see that the back stairwell demolition is occurring. But the main thing in this report, and I've, I've brought this up in passing, and I'm just making sure to keep this on the council's radar, as with any large-scale construction project, specifically on a historic building like this, demolition is always going to, to reveal some, some things, and some of those are really interesting. You'll see on page three, she showed the existing jail windows they found in the basement, because of course this building was a jail, it was a firehouse, it was, it's got a really rich history, so some of those things are, are interesting. And I'll, I'll, I don't want to oversimplify this, it'll come back in much greater detail, but demolition also yielded some load-bearing columns in places they didn't expect them, and vice versa. They're very optimistic about the design changes and the cost outlay, so I don't, I don't want to say one way or the other, but there's not, there's not like large panic about a significant cost impact, but the design team is working on how they're going to kind of reconfigure things based on those discoveries. So I, I think she includes like a four-week timeline for bringing that information back to the council in terms of the redesign. One of the places that, that will require some kind of adjustment is the council chambers, which of course is one of the, you know, primary purposes of this project, is expanding public access to public meetings and to the council chambers. So we'll make sure to be, be really interactive in terms of that process, because I know the council wants to make sure that those, those plans meet the need for the community there. So if they're, if after you review this, if you all have any questions in follow-up, our, our architecture and construction management team, they're, they're very responsive, been very happy working with them. So I, I have no doubt that any questions you all have, we can get quick answers, but I anticipate probably the second November meeting, having a representative from either the construction management team, or the architecture team, or both, here to kind of talk through status and, and any decision points that need to be made. So they're ready, willing, and able to attend council meetings as the project moves forward.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
I noticed here that they did find some mold, so they're going to have to do some mold mitigation as they go through this?
Yes, and I think that was all well anticipated, yeah.
Yeah.
So, a lot of that's being just completely ripped out, it's part of the project anyways, and the demo's pretty extensive.
Yeah. Do you know if they found any asbestos?
I don't think they have, but I haven't asked that question. Eddie?
I, I believe they have yet.
I'll, I'll confirm that.
Yeah, we, we have to ask.
Okay. The other thing, a couple of people
Excuse me.
Said visitors who have come to the town are looking at our City Hall and going, did it burn down? What's, what's happening? And they made what I thought was a good suggestion, that we put a sign, kind of like, I think there's a sign outside of the, the Justice Center that has a, a picture of what it would look like at completion, and it might be a nice advertisement, because this project's going to take quite a while, to have our construction company take the blueprint of what it might look like, and put it on a sign and say, project completion date estimate and future City Hall, so that our constituents know and can get excited about it. It's just a suggestion.
And I think we, that was brought to my attention, Deb and I talked about that, and I think we're going to talk to them about getting that done.
Okay, great.
So we're depositing, looking at that.
Did they find any lead and copper in that building yet?
They, they hung something on the door, but nobody called them.
Now, here we go. Now, let's see, let's move on.
So like I said, if you all think of any questions as you review that, please don't hesitate to reach out, and we'll, we'll get that for, for you all. The next item, sorry, Mayor, Tonya Thunder, moving to the next item.
No, go right ahead.
I don't, I don't have too much to report here, I primarily wanted this on the agenda so that the council knew that this had not fallen off the radar, and one of the significant takeaways from the Revenue Commission's presentation was that we could probably have some more teeth in our local code. Instead of, you know, requiring enforcement to be citing the Internal Revenue Code, we could kind of create a culture of accountability by having more local regulations. So Jessica has shared with me a handful of recommendations, and I've got, I've got those, and I'm, I'm going to process those into the form of an amendment slash, you know, new code provision. Some of them are new, some of them are amendments, which would include preferences for qualified bidders who are compliant, because we think about, I, I think she brought this point up, if, is it really the low bidder if they're not paying their net profits and they owe net profits? So it's, that compliance piece does matter, suspension of contract leases and payment agreements for noncompliance, revocation of business license. And then one that was interesting, you know, the only employer that isn't required to withhold, report, and pay those payroll taxes is the federal government. So apparently, one issue they run into a lot is like postal workers, and so making sure that we have more teeth for compliance, and reemphasizing that it is a criminal offense to withhold and not remit those monies to, to the taxing jurisdiction. So she's, she's made some great recommendations, I hope, I hope for First Reading to come to the council at the next meeting in November. But the other component to that that we've talked a lot about is the publication of noncompliance, and I know that that's going to go to the Revenue Commission for discussion. Her recommendation is that it be codified, the other jurisdictions that are doing that, I think are just doing it, and her recommendation would be that we, we address that in a much more formal way and provide maybe notice and rights to appeal, in, in order to, to give folks the best opportunity to get compliant without being on that list. So I know that's going to go to the Revenue Commission, she even, she even mentioned the, since, since there's nothing really stating you can do it explicitly, maybe just submitting that as a question to the Attorney General's Office and letting them go ahead and say, yes, I, I think you are right, and you are able to do that. That could take a while, I, I don't think we'll, I, I think even if we don't have a firm decision on that, we can go forward with the other amendments and code provisions and, and wait on that, but that's kind of the status of that situation, there's a Revenue Commission There's a Revenue Commission meeting on Wednesday, so hopefully we get some good feedback out of that.
And next is the BG Rides bus stop permission renewal.
Yes, so council members who were here last year might remember that at the time, Bluegrass Community Action Partnership came to the council and requested to use the corner of Clayton and Broadway that the city owns as one of their bus stops. And the council, just through a voice vote, granted them a one-year permission to utilize that space as a stop. And I made a calendar note, and it popped up the other day, so that expires tomorrow. And so if the council is still interested, they're now called Bluegrass Rides, and they've kind of rebranded and doing some good things. My assumption, actually, I think Tracy reached out, they still are gonna want to use that location instead of putting a time limit on it. And it's obviously within the council's purview. But I would recommend that the council just grant approval under the condition that the council or the city will give thirty days' notice when we don't want them to use that as a bus stop if the city should move for the stormwater project or other uses of that property. But that is up to renew, and.
I'll take a motion.
Motion's made by Ms. Hambrik, second by Mr. Hampton. Are there further questions and/or comment?
Mayor, if I could, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Go ahead, Mark.
No, go ahead.
One thing that was brought up, and I was gonna bring it up in council comments, but this is about as good a time as any, is the bus stop down here on Washington Street. A lot of people do use that. Is there any way that they can, is it, would it be up to Bluegrass Rides? Or would it be up to the city to add a shelter there for folks waiting for the bus? Because they're sitting in the hot sun, and they're sitting in the weather, you know, look at something to get them out of them.
I think that would be a Bluegrass Rides initiative. But we've got a contact, we're glad to reach out and ask if they've got any intentions of doing that. I have seen that stop utilized heavily.
Yeah, and people sitting in, especially the hot weather we had.
Hot weather, rain.
Getting into cold weather, so.
Question.
This might be a dumb question, and if it is, I will apologize on the front side. Is it possible, if we don't already do it, to put their stops where all of their stops are? Maybe even putting it on our website, if it's not already there? And maybe even posting it in the newspaper, just so people know? Because I'll be honest, I'm not sure.
I would say that, you know, that's a possibility that we can look into with asking Sarah whether the server's gonna be as part of our web site redesign that we're looking into, so we could possibly see if we can get that put on there.
And as a follow-up to that, I know there've been some changes in the voting locations. And I think it would be really helpful to do what Mark's saying before the city vote, because a lot more folks might not be able to walk to the Ed Davis Center or whatever. And if they knew that the bus location, where it would be, and in that advertisement, I think I'm accurate in saying that the bus will go a half a mile off their route if they have a call the day before to schedule it.
Yes.
So advertising those kinds of things, I think would be a good public service for the city to do.
Yeah, we can absolutely. I know part of our website redesign, hopefully, will include, you know, community resources and things like that. So that is a great place to put polling locations, bus stop, bus routes. I know that our nonprofit partners do a really good job of engaging with their clients and making sure they're aware of the bus opportunities. So I think it is kind of dependent on where you're going and where you're seeing maybe flyers or information. But I couldn't agree more that there's never harm in pushing it out as much as possible. So I'll work on getting that on our website and kind of improving our community resources section.
Mayor, I had contacted Bluegrass Action, Community Action, and was asking them about any data that they're collecting. They collect total ridership. For August of 2024, they had two thousand two hundred ninety-one riders. And I was asking them if they track it by location, by day, and by time, so we can understand if a particular stop is not being utilized. So then we can make good decisions on, maybe this isn't the best stop, a different place would be better. So I'm just working with them about their dataset and see if they could break that data down. Total ridership is good, but it doesn't give us the data we need to analyze if it's effective or not.
Okay. Any other question and/or comment? Motion's made, and promptly second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise. Let the record reflect that the motion carry. Now, we have the, from Finance, we have the first reading of the year 2024 budget amendment orders. Sponsored by Alonzo Allen and Greg Hampton.
Good evening. I'll walk through the budget amendment, even though it is mostly a cleanup one at the first reading. I always like to do that. So in your council packet, if you have that handy, of course, you've got the memorandum. Like I said, it's brief this time, because it's mainly a correcting budget amendment. But if you go to the pages past the memo, the spreadsheet where I break it down in detail by fund, this is just the support for the ordinance, so you can see everything line by line. So starting with the general fund, you'll see that our original budget balance that we adopted for the year was using one point three million dollars of prior year revenues. And then the first section that says carry forward items from fiscal year twenty-three. So these are projects or expenses that we initiated in fiscal year twenty-three. We budgeted for in fiscal year twenty-three, but they were not completed until fiscal year twenty-four. So as I always mentioned, that does not affect the overall bottom line. It is just shifting the expenses from last fiscal year to this fiscal year instead. So you'll see all of those listed by department. The last two, Stormwater and Cemetery, they say transfer to Environmental Service Fund, transfer to Cemetery Fund. When I get over to those funds, you'll see those expenses there. But as always mentioned, Stormwater and Cemetery are two functions that we support with general revenues. So the expenses live in those funds, but the general fund has to transfer the money to those funds that we support. The Business Park Fund, the ones that say previously approved transactions, those are the ones that you all have approved via municipal order or resolution since we adopted the budget. So they didn't get a chance to be included in the budget, we have adopted them since then. So for the general fund, that's the net gain contract to include police, the five new police vehicle leases, the regional economic development site option contracts. Devin can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe some of those option contracts have been signed. So we should probably be receiving a bill from Scott County for our portion of those option contracts. As Greg mentioned in his update, we've elected to delay our portion of the, is it PDI? Did I say that right? The grant applications we made to the state for Phase Three in the regional development, we will include those in the budget when and if we receive that funding. The Business Park Fund, we previously had a sanitary sewer line relocation that will be funded from leftover funds from previous sales. The 911 Fund, those are both carry forward items from last budget year. With the next three funds, the MAP Fund, the LGEA Fund, and the Drug Fund, with those, again, we develop the budget in April and May, and I have to kind of do my best guesstimate of what's gonna be left over at the end of the year to carry forward to the next year. So in the first budget amendment of the year, I always adjust. So for the MAP Fund, we had one point three million left over. In the current budget, I only budgeted for current year revenue from KYTC, so this is carrying over unused funds. The same thing on LGEA. With the Drug Fund, I estimated the balance at the end of the year to be two hundred forty-six thousand. Between April and June, they spent thirteen thousand, so I have to lower the amount being carried forward. The Grant Fund, as mentioned before, the previously approved are new grants that you've accepted via resolution. The, some of these were just at the last meeting. The KOHS fire grant for the hazmat truck, the cleaner water grant funding for GMWSS. Again, that's just a pass-through, we receive the money. And then I write a check to GMWSS, and they manage the project. The Assistance to Firefighters Grant, the Fire Commission Grant. And the bottom, the carry forward grant balances, like the other funds, I have to adjust what's at the end of the year based on bills paid for those. The same thing on the ARPA Fund, we had some remaining project balances. Again, I estimate what's gonna be left, and we had a few things to clean up. For example, Scott County EMS, we ended up getting a bill for architectural design fees through June thirtieth. So that was something I hadn't anticipated when I developed the budget. The Environmental Services Fund, so this is the carry forward items for Stormwater. There were a couple of unfinished projects. And it shows as a transfer from general fund, again, because the general fund supports that function. Cemetery, the cemetery wall repair was not completed until after July one. You see our half as a transfer from general fund, and then the county's half, since they help fund cemetery. And then lastly, the Capital Projects Fund, just had some budget corrections on the KIA South Sewer Extinction Project, again, because we had pay apps through June thirtieth. So I adjusted for the amount of pay apps paid. So all of that detail is a support, basically, for the summary ordinance where you see, it'll say prior year revenues increased by, whether the departmental expenses go up or down. And then on like the general fund, you'll see transfers to other funds. Those are those transfers to Stormwater and Cemetery to cover those carry forward projects. So again, all of that is a cleanup, there was nothing new in this budget amendment. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
An ordinance amending the annual budget ordinance for fiscal year July one, 2023, through June thirty, 2024. Summary, general fund, prior year revenues are increased by six hundred nine thousand seven hundred seventy-six dollars and fifty cents. General government expenses are increased by seventy-seven thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Police expenses are increased by one hundred eighty-five thousand three hundred and fifty-three dollars. Fire expenses are increased by twenty-three thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars. City engineer expenses are increased by twenty-nine thousand five hundred. Capital expenditures are increased by one hundred and fifteen thousand. Transfers to other funds are increased by one hundred and seventy-eight thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars and fifty cents. Business Park Fund, prior year revenues are increased by one hundred and ninety-five thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight. Utility expenses are increased by one hundred and ninety-five thousand seven hundred and ninety-eight. 911 Fund, intergovernmental revenues are increased by fourteen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. Dispatch 911 expenses are increased by twenty-eight thousand three hundred. MAP Fund, prior year revenues are increased by one million three hundred and eighty-three thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars. Capital expenses are increased by one million three hundred and eighty-three thousand two hundred and sixty-five. LGEA Fund, prior year revenues are increased by seventy-five thousand two hundred and eighty-one. Public works expense are increased by seventy-five thousand two hundred and eighty-one. Drug Fund, prior year revenues are decreased by thirteen thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-four cents. Police expenses are decreased by thirteen thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-four cents. Grant Fund, prior year revenues are increased by twenty thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars and sixty-seven cents. State grant revenue is increased by fifty thousand dollars. Federal grant revenue is increased by four million five hundred and twelve thousand three hundred and thirty-six dollars and eighty-three cents. Police expenses are increased by thirty-one thousand four hundred and seventy dollars and fifty cents. Fire expenses are increased by two hundred and eighty-nine thousand one hundred and eighty-two dollars. Capital expenses are increased by four million two hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred and twenty-seven. ARPA Fund, federal grant revenue is decreased by four hundred and seventy-eight thousand four hundred and three dollars. Fire expenses are increased by six thousand dollars. Stormwater expenses are increased by thirty-two thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars. Community service expenses are increased by ninety-five thousand six hundred and ninety-two dollars. Inter-local expenses are decreased by five hundred and twelve thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars. Capital expenses are decreased by one hundred thousand forty-four dollars. Environmental Services Fund, stormwater expenses are increased by one hundred and fifty thousand four hundred and five dollars. Transfers from other funds are increased by one hundred and fifty thousand four hundred and five dollars. Cemetery Fund, intergovernmental revenues are increased by twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty cents. Transfers from other funds are increased by twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty cents. Cemetery expenses are increased by fifty-five thousand six hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Capital Projects Fund, intergovernmental revenues are increased by two hundred and sixty-eight thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars. Loan proceeds are decreased by one million two hundred and seventy-six thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. Capital expenses are decreased by one million eight thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. This ordinance shall take effect after its passage and publication according to law. The full text of this ordinance is available for examination in the City Clerk's Office, 629 North Broadway, Georgetown, Kentucky, 40324, or at www.georgetownky.gov. Publicly introduced and read for the first time, October twenty-third, 2023.
Next is the Municipal Order Approving Central Bank Treasury Management Services Agreement.
We use Central Bank and Trust as our main depository account. And I reached out to them to ask what we could do to ensure we were getting the best rates on our just depository. And just to explain how we use this, we have set up with them just your regular checking account. That's where your deposits go in, your checks come out. And it is paired with a sweep account, or a repurchase account is what it's called. So anything not being needed or used for that daily basis sweeps into the repurchase account. As you'll see on the sheet with the blue heading, currently, our target is two million dollars. That means two million dollars stays in the regular checking, and everything else is swept in and out of the repurchase account as needed for daily business. What Central Bank recommended was that we adjust our target balance to two hundred and fifty thousand, which means we would sweep everything else in and out of the repurchase account. Even though it is only a point one percent change in the interest rate, with our cash balance, it would be five thousand more, about five thousand more a month in interest, so about sixty thousand a year in additional interest, so.
Okay. Do I have a motion? Motion made by Mr. Hampton.
Second.
Second made by Mr. Allen. Are there further questions and/or comments? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say likewise. Let the record reflect that this motion passed. Next, the Municipal Order Approving Stockyard Banks CD renewal.
Yes, so we had a, there's a memo in here that explains all the detail, but the overall view is, we had a CD mature a little bit earlier this month. I was notified by Stockyards that we had a ten-day grace period to change terms on the CD, or it would automatically roll back in. This is a CD we've had there for years. The balance was around six hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars. And so after speaking with all members of the Finance Committee, council members of Allen, Hampton, and Mayor Jenkins, we did not want to let that grace period expire. It would have rolled into, back into a two-year term with a two-point-six-two interest rate if nothing had been done. We didn't have time to bring it to the full council, but we were able to roll it into a thirteen-month penalty-free CD with a rate of four-point-seven-five percent. We felt the risk was low, because it's penalty-free, meaning if council wanted to do something different with that money, six days after rolling it over, you can draw it out, do something else with it, and you don't lose any money on it. The two-year renewal, if it had rolled back into that, that was not penalty-free. And if we had tried to close it out, it would have been a one percent, or like seven thousand dollar penalty. So we wanted to make sure we didn't lose a good rate, and that we didn't let it roll back into a CD with unfavorable terms. So this is a retroactive approval, but we are working with all of our financial institutions where we hold CDs and investments to make sure we have a plan in place to make sure we get these in front of Finance Committee earlier. So rather than us being notified a couple of days, you know, after maturity, and so.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion's made by Mr. Allen, second by Ms. Brent. Are there further questions and/or discussion?
I think just to reiterate what Stacy was saying, we put some triggers in place so that this will come before council. We're not in a situation where it matured, and then we've gotta take retroaction. So this shouldn't happen again.
And just to add to that, I mean, this is a better, a lot better deal. I mean, it's sort of tying the money up for two years, it's only thirteen months now, at an interest rate that is two points higher than what we had before.
Any other further comment and/or question?
What's the problem of not knowing in a timely fashion, because Stockyards did not?
I'll be honest, it's, we've had some of these CDs for a while, and I don't have the due dates on my calendar. So, you know, we get the bank statements, and we put them in a folder, and I'll bet, to be honest, I've never looked. And they've just rolled over since I've been here. So I appreciate that now that Stockyards has taken over and has developed a relationship with us, they are being much more proactive about that. So we've never had that in the past. They, like I said, I didn't track the due dates. Our previous financial institution just kind of let them roll over and never contacted me. So I appreciate that they're proactive. But in light of the investment policy and having to have approval on everything, we're going to make sure that we catch these at least 45 to 60 days in advance because I've got to have time to take it to Finance Committee and then bring it to full council before.
I just wanted to make sure we still had good confidence in Stockyards.
Oh, yes, they have been extremely, I can't say enough good things about them. They've obviously, it was a different financial institution before it was Stockyards. And I can't say anything bad. I can say only good things about Stockyards team and how proactive they are about contacting us, so.
Stacy, do we have any other CDs, whether it be at Stockyards or any other bank that are coming up for renewal anytime?
That's why I've been preparing for my audit, so I haven't had a chance to look, but we're going to get with that. Stockyards, I've already had the conversation with, so they're going to make sure. He's already put calendar reminders on his calendar and my calendar for the two we have at Stockyards. We have one at Whittaker and one at West Banko, so I'm going to follow up with them and make sure we have those.
So we just have four, correct?
Just four.
And we've just taken care of one of them?
Yes.
So three.
So we have three others. So we'll work on getting those, you know, on a schedule and, or evaluate how we want to handle them otherwise, so.
All right, any other further questions and or discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise. Let the record reflect that this motion has passed. Next, is that it? Next, it's got the Public Works Municipal Order approving the purchase of our wood chipper. This is a budget item that we've had and we've approved, so you want to tell us a little bit about more of the wood chipper?
Yeah, it was a budget item. The one we have now is 20-some years old. We got two bids, one for 53, I think, and one for 44. And we'd like to go with the one for 44, 250 from Incon.
What was budgeted? What amount was budgeted?
70. I got that number from the type we have now. It was a Vermeer. And when I did my, I got that number in March. When I did my research, the Vermeer went up about 5,000. So we hit the ground, we found another one. We really liked the other one, but the 44,000 better actually.
So what was that amount, 44,000?
44,250.
44,250?
Was it 450 or 250?
450 on this.
Sorry, 450.
Motion there.
I'll make a second.
Motion's made by Mr. Showalter, second made by Ms. Conway. Other further discussion and or questions? All in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say likewise. Let the record reflect that this motion passed. Next, we have council comments and I'm going to start. I spin the wheel today and Ms. Hambrik, you won out, so you're going to go first today.
Wow, I've never won anything in my life, so I'm. Eddie, could you tell us what percentage of the sidewalks that were identified as needy were able to be completed on this first phase? I mean, like a third, half?
Yeah, I don't have the exact number, but it's pretty close. We identified about 200 to 220 that the head trip happened. We prepared approximately half of it and they sent us, filled out the application. They sent it out to us and we gave the cost estimate and they gave the payment deposit. We have two sidewalks that we've completed and one we just recently identified on Broadway.
The one that we had talked about?
Yes.
Okay, good.
The same one, we did brought to our attention. And then the other one is we have a fiber optic on our cable lines in the way it has to be buried underneath first before. And we're waiting on 18 to do that to be ready as soon as they do that then. So we've done them all except for those two.
Okay, and so in order to do more, we're going to need to have to, what's the process?
Yeah, so I know Eddie and Shay in the engineers office are working with Stacy to kind of reconcile those numbers. I know that we want to make sure the budget numbers on what's left in that account match up with the numbers that Eddie's office has. The goal would be that they would kind of give a, an end of first phase summary of how many sidewalks were able to be fixed and things like that. And then the council, it's as simple as approving additional funds for the project. I mean, I think it'll help the council to see, okay, with our $100,000 allocation, this is how many sidewalks were remedied. And, you know, we, we kind of were just in that first phase, but we also, now that we've provided additional opportunity, we can treat some of these as code enforcement violations for folks who don't come to the table. So I think once that report's given to the council, you'll have kind of more information to determine if you want to add money to the program. I know Eddie's office has also been working with Precision Concrete Cutting to talk about doing kind of like a pilot project. We've talked about this in the past, Precision, they shave, not all sidewalks qualify for it. Some you have to rip out and repour. But they were kind of looking into doing a pilot project that would maybe showcase some opportunities for less invasive and expensive repairs. But I know that conversation's ongoing, so I think more coming to the council once they're able to reconcile those numbers.
Okay, thank you.
We'll see everything Stacy, she said to us, we're comparing her notes to ours and seeing where we.
Yeah.
Did something I put the wrong account on.
Okay, thank you. I've had lots of people, I think because of being attention to the fire parade and things, have been really thankful to have the free, the ability to have the free fire and carbon monoxide detectors. So thank you to the fire department for doing that. It means a lot to a lot of people. Had even a couple of people stop me on the street and say, congratulate the fire department. They've been very good and come right in. And so I think it's always good to hear applause. Also, the, and I know the mayor and I have talked about this, just going forward, I think the Thriller Parade and the car show were kind of right up against each other. And I know Todd was aware of this as well. We got, I got a couple of calls from some people and the mayor made sure that we had police access there to make sure that, I think we need to, going forward, have a better calendar look at how we are closing down Main Street and making sure that there's a buffer time between when one activity stops and another one starts. Because one stopped at 6:00 and one started at 6:00. I did want to tell the Amen House, thank you for Thriller. It was another good event and I know that it helps their collection of canned goods going into the fall and the winter. But the car show also had six approved, I believe. And that's six times of closing down Main Street. And two of the businesses just this week mentioned to me that we're closing down Main Street a lot and they're not sure that it's as much of an asset as it might be a detriment. So maybe we need to survey the Main Street businesses and it is a state road as well. So I don't know, I just think it takes, we need to take another look. We are closing it down quite a bit. And if it's adversely affecting business, I think that's something we need to be aware of. And the last thing, how we come in the city attorney?
Willow, can I add something before we come?
Yeah, yeah.
The area behind City Hall is a good place to do a car show without shutting down the.
Exactly, I mentioned that a couple of weeks ago.
Main Street, so I think we need to just keep that area in mind in the future.
Yeah, thank you.
Prior to this year, that's where that car show was held historically. So I think, you know, obviously you all have got some feedback from this process. I know Tracy is intricately involved with the event process. She kind of shepherds that through, so I think all good information to have going into next year.
Yeah. How are we doing with city attorney? Are we still having applicants? The process is ongoing?
Well, yes, we are, we are just about finalizing that.
Oh, fantastic.
Got some good interviews.
All right, wonderful. And the last thing, and I know Stacy and I have talked, when, and I haven't talked to Alonso and Greg, but I've brought up before that if we have money sitting that is not designated and it's not making decent interest, just like we took that 5 million a few months ago, interest rates are now well over 5%. If we could even do, I know we're waiting on a fiscal agent, is that what we're calling it, and a review? But I'm not quite sure of how long that timeline might be. And if we have 5 to 6 to 7 million dollars, I don't know the numbers, but if we do, even in six months, we could make a lot of interest. So just throwing that out there, that's of interest to me, no pun intended.
I'll jump in just one point on that because you brought the fiscal agent. I know Greg reported some of the other topics we touched on at the committee meeting, but unless there's some issue in negotiating the terms of the contract, I would anticipate we'd have a fiscal agent recommendation at the next meeting.
Okay, so that's moving along pretty quick.
Yes, so those presentations happen, the committee will get back together and score and then make a recommendation to the full council. But I don't, unless there's some kind of issue, I don't see there a reason. We've got a three-week gap between council meetings now, so I would foresee that coming to the council at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hampton?
Just to respond to Councilwoman Hambrik's comment on the investments. You know, we do have the investment policy and we are aware of that. And, you know, we keep close eye on that, you know, with Stacy. But, you know, when we make these investments, we tie that money up and we have to be careful that we don't tie up too much money for too long of a period of time. So it's a balancing act, so just be aware of that, so that's all I have there.
Mr. Showalter?
Two items. Mrs. Conley mentioned something earlier in the meeting, your Public Works Committee meeting that you recently had. You and Mrs. Tackin had. And I thought I heard that, so correct me if I'm wrong. I think one of the items was the, the Conley coming out of Conley. Conley moved our.
Coming out on 25, and I think you mentioned permits or maybe a permit or either singular or plural. Where do we stand on that with Kentucky?
Can you turn to the mic please? Thank you.
So part of that, the dividing line between the state road right of way and the private subdivision is kind of right where we're going to be working. And we have to obtain an encroachment permit from the state. We've met with them on site, Robert and I met with them one day last week. And we're going to submit, you know, the permit application to them. That one light pole, we're going to have to move it. It's right in the middle of that island there, kind of in a bad spot. So we're going to have to move it to one side or the other. And we'll have to obtain the permit from them and then we'll do the work, so.
Is that something that's, you're going to possibly hear back by the end of the year or are we going to get?
Oh, yeah, I think on the permit, we will for sure get everything ready to go. It'll just, probably the longest lead time is getting that light moved, to be honest with you.
And a follow-up to that?
I will, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we're all over it, yeah, we're going to get it done.
I apologize, I wasn't.
No, 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 you're fine.
A follow-up question to that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
The light poles that we have approved, what seems like years ago now?
I know, I know. It's, everything is, you cannot get streetlights right now, nobody can. There's a supply chain shortage issue with actually the poles themselves, the metal poles themselves. As it turns out, you know, these obscure things get held up. And nobody can get them. You can get wood poles all day long, but you cannot get metal poles.
Okay, so we haven't forgotten that.
We have a handful of, we have probably a half dozen subdivisions all around Georgetown where we put the work orders in to KU, install these lights at these addresses. We've sent them, sent them the notifications and they're just telling us, we don't know when we're going to get them put in. It's very frustrating, I know, for me and for a lot of people, so. And you and, you know.
If I can ask a question, so we are waiting on light poles that we don't know when we're going to get.
Yes, sir.
So we've been at this almost two years now, maybe even longer.
Longer.
Longer, so my question is, is there any way that we can, you know, circle back and maybe change the order where we can get the wooden pole? If that's going to fix the things right there, I'm just asking that question.
I could pose that question to KU, that's not an issue. Sometimes back in subdivisions, they've pre-selected, there's four different styles of light poles. There's the colonial style, there's the Cobra head, there's like four different styles that are NR. And they've already selected and they want to match everything else that's there.
Okay.
Now, the ones out on the state, that I think the one you're talking about are on the state roads.
On man.
Yeah, that's, that's our.
Okay. Just, just.
Yes, I will absolutely follow up on that.
Looking at, like I said, just, just for my information, I'd like to know that, you know.
Sure.
You know, if it's going to take a while, you know, we can follow up as to how long this is taking us. Because this project has been going on for years and we still have not gotten anything. I understand there's a shortage, but, you know, it comes to a point in time that we have to do something because we're sitting in the dark out here trying to get things done, you know. So I'm just, just something to bring forward and hopefully we can keep us updated on that.
I will.
Anything we can do to help?
No, I appreciate it very much, yeah.
Thanks, Eddie.
You're welcome.
All right.
The only other, the only other item I have is, it was on the agenda tonight. We've got to keep, again, I don't want to speak for others, I apologize. Let me rephrase that. I believe we have to keep moving forward as quick as possible with the Revenue Commission on giving them the ability to go after the businesses that are not filing a net profit tax. I think that has to remain a priority. My goal, I would hope that we can get something done before the end of the year. I think we have three council meetings left, maybe four. I would hope that that, my hope would be that if something's brought back, we got it, it should be a priority.
It is on the hot alert list to be done. I mean, and I said, you know, with our meeting with the Revenue Commission, it's taking bold steps on their end, on our end, on trying to do something with that. And also, I think, I know Devin is working with some, with Scott and also with Jessica on some avenues and trying to fine tune all this. And as soon as we get that nailed down, we'll hope to have this brought to the council as soon as possible, if not sooner. Thank you. All right, Mr. Stone?
Thanks, sir. To go off what Willow brought up earlier about closing a Main Street, maybe we could look at adding it to a portion of it to the Police Committee? Because it mostly deals with the Police Department and what they have to do. And let it come to that committee, a road closure ahead of time. Let the Police Committee decide, yes, this is a good thing. It'd be a scheduling and it'd have more information before it come to council. Just a thought.
Okay.
It does go to the road officer before it comes here.
So just throwing that out there, so.
Anything else?
No, sir.
All right, Mr. Allen?
Yes, in our last council meeting, Executive Director of Tourism presented some information on the restaurant tax. And it was not intended for us to take a vote, nor in the near future. I don't see it even happening, a vote. But it was just information so that we could begin to think about it. So I'd like to request, and it is such a hot topic right now in our community, I'd like to request that we look at a restaurant tax committee with key stakeholders, pun intended, Willow. Stakeholders. Because we need to really have a good plan in place and understand what other communities are doing and what went well, what didn't go well. Just a strategy around that. I'd like to see an updated survey. I think the Executive Director's survey was more than five years old. So having all the information before us, community input and feedback before us so that we can make a sound decision. So just something to consider there. And also, tonight you talked about the. And also, uh, tonight you talked about the Bridge Street and putting a group together to ta- take a look at that. I would volunteer my services for that, if that's possible.
And, and to follow up on that, you asked about the, uh, the, uh, restaurant tax. You know, I've been surveyed, I've been reaching out to some of the communities that have this and have the population close to what we have. And as I gather information, my intent is to gather all information first, get everything ready. So, when we have this discussion and when we're talking to these stakeholders that's involved, we'll have all the pertinent information we have, include them in the process and then go from there.
Okay.
Okay?
That's all.
Ms. Conway?
Okay, just related to what Alonso just said. Many people have contacted me about the restaurant tax and I've listened to their concerns. And I told them I care about their thoughts on the issue. A whole lot of them aren't in favor of it. But, I'm listening, trying to be there for the people, 'cause they're who we work for, the people. The next thing I wanted to say, when Willow brought up the sidewalks, um, Eddie, I have a question for you. Could I pester you please about this? Um, I know you said as of 2023, it's exhaust, the funds are exhausted on this.
We're, we're very close to it.
Yes.
We, we've allocated a hundred thousand dollars.
And you had told me in the past how many we actually got done approximately. And I think people were very excited about it and helped by it. And I think it's, since I'm kind of the sidewalk person that keeps talking about safety and sidewalks. Um, I would like to see there be a chance for some additional funds for 2024. But, there's a couple of concerns. One thing is, I think we possibly need more than one contractor. So we don't get, if, if more than one will, will apply for it, you know, and, and put their hat in the ring. So we don't get backed up on it. Um, and the other thing is, is there some type of a, I can't remember the commercial now, but I've seen over and over again, like if there is a trip hazard, where there's a difference in the level of an inch or two in a sidewalk, which somebody could do a nosedive and fall, is there some way less evasive to literally pull up the concrete from underneath? I can't remember who does that, what business, but you see it.
A, A-one?
Is it A-one leveling of the concrete?
There's different techniques.
And, and that could be much less expensive, I think. I don't know that for a fact, we'd have to research that. And to see whether or not some issues could be corrected by that. And, um, the other thing is, because there was a delay in some of them getting fixed. If there could be a conversation about, you know, taking more than one subcontractor to do, to do the work. And then that way, maybe there wouldn't be such a delay in it, so.
There wasn't delay in most of them.
Right.
There were a few where they did drag out.
Yes, yes.
I apologize for that.
Well.
But, um, and Devin and I have actually spoken about, um, changing some of the wording in the contract.
Yes.
To have some dates in there that that is done, so-so date.
That's a good idea.
Some days, and adjusting that, and we think that will help a lot.
Well, and I, I had a.
Maybe face a penalty if they don't get it done, and then we can help people on Friday. And, uh, hey, you got as many days to get it done.
Right.
We can give it some time so we don't.
Some communication.
We did, yeah, we, uh.
Information.
Some of them, some of them took a while.
Well, the majority of them didn't, but some of them did. And, and the other thought I had, and I don't know how this'll work, but I mentioned it, I think, to Stacy a long time ago, that maybe if there is a bit of a delay, um, or we see that there's gonna be the interest that push it, pushes it forward, that we ask for a deposit for the sidewalk and then two weeks prior to actually fixing the sidewalk, then we could get the balance. Because I think that was some of the people's concern, was they've had my money for months and they haven't told me anything and they haven't fixed it. But, instead of taking half, uh, the, well, they're total amount, which would be half if they, if we charged them a percentage, a deposit, so to speak. And then before the sidewalk's ever poured, before the work is done, the balance is completed to the city. You know, that's just a thought, I don't know.
And I'm gonna.
Going forward. Done.
I'm gonna talk a little bit about that. We, we've had that discussion and, you know, we're talking about putting something in place where we actually have a contract and in the contract states that you have a timeline which to do it in. And something else is that, you know, you, you add another mechanism of collecting money, you know? So, you wanna, if you can collect everything upfront, I get it. And we're talking about if there's gonna be a delay, and once we put this timeline in place, if we have a delay, we're gonna contact the, the, uh, the homeowner and say, okay, we have, uh, a delay, here's what is gonna happen. This is the new timeline which we're gonna get this done.
Right.
And of course, we're gonna stay on the contractor to push him, or her, or whoever, to get this done in a timely fashion.
No, I agree, yeah, there were some that, that took too long.
I agree.
Thank you.
I think we learned a lot this cycle and we've got some changes to the bid documents and to the contract documents. I mean, you're, the balance you're, you're weighing there is that, these are small projects. And so mobilization for these contractors, i- there's a significant cost associated with it. So, we, we do wanna balance that, but I think the communication to the property owner is the biggest key.
I do, too.
Um, I'll come to, I, he, he won't advocate for himself, but Eddie and Shay are a, a two-man operation.
Right.
In, in most cities our size, there would be at least two more people in that department and they, they run a smooth operation. So I, I guess my only comment, I, I like what you're saying about, um, communication with the property owner, but in terms of adding more steps, I think our time is definitely best suited working on the communication line. Because, for the most part, that, people just wanna know, right? They just wanna know, okay, they're projected to be here within the next week, or they've run into a snag. So, we weigh that mobilization issue and, um, we'll, we'll make some improvements the next cycle, assuming the council wants to renew it. Because I think, I think it's overall a great program.
Yeah, we need to adjust our, our bidding just a little, make a few tweaks where we have a little bit more control over, uh, dates and times and schedules. We'll do that.
Thank you, good idea, thank you.
Okay, last but not least.
I'm a, I'm a good girl, I'm sleepy. First, I wanna say that Mark and I attended this Safe Haven Box Ceremony this past Saturday and it was a great attendance. The previous council, which I got with Devin, about the plaque that was supposed to be dedicated, Mr. Thompson, is that gonna be?
Yeah, so the previous council had, had asked that there be a plaque honoring Marvin Thompson, um, for, you know, his life lived in service, uh, to a lot of causes, but one of them being the Noddon Pregnancy Center. So, we've got a draft narrative for that, we've got a photograph to go on the plaque and Wendy is working on getting that pulled together. So I think there will be a, at a council meeting, ask, uh, Mrs. Thompson to be here and the council can kind of dedicate that plaque. And it'll be placed there, um, at Fire Station One, the EMS building where the, where the box is located.
Thank you, 'cause it would've been nice if we had it that day, but I guess it just got missed. I wanna say thank you to Veronica Carpenter for giving me the opportunity to do the judge, to judge the thrill to give. That was fun. I wanted to vote for everybody, that's my character, but that was fun, I appreciate that opportunity to do that. I wanna thank Mr. Eddie. I had some emails from a senior's, a, a brother and sister over in the Ed Davis Center and they were having problems trying to locate a plumber. So he helped me get them, a reliable plumber, and I just wanna thank you for helping with that, 'cause, you know, I like to help.
Robert, you.
Ro- yes, and Robert, I'm sorry, Robert, you too. I just wanna thank you all, 'cause, you know, I like to help people and I appreciate you all taking the time to help me with that. Um, and I also wanna thank you, Eddie, for getting that wood Semino and wood lawn, that parking situation. And the, my constituents said thank you too for that, appreciate that. So you're helping me a lot, I appreciate that. And then I went to the Parks Steering Committee. I missed you, Todd. But it was actually really good this time. And I think we're all on the same page where we wanna, I think people see that we need to start getting things like, uh, I'm sorry, I've lost words. Getting things, instead of going and adding the pickleball fields and doing things like that, we need to get everything updated and renovated that needs to be done now, instead of, I mean, I know we want the pickleball fields, but right now I wouldn't vote or wanna spend any money. We just need to get things updated. And I wanna know if we are ADA compliant with the parks, with pavilion, can you?
So any, so the law requires that if you go in and make improvements to a building, that that's when you come up to compliance? So I, the, the question of whether we're compliant, we might not be, but we're not unlawfully uncompli- non-compliant because of, you, you following?
I, I got you, 'cause I just wanna make sure, just going by the parks and different things, I wanna make sure.
Any work that's done now is, is.
'Cause I don't want it to get fined or anything like that.
Correct, correct, yes.
Okay.
Yep, that's, that's my understanding.
Okay. And I told Ms. Rice, Kim Rice, that I would check in Alonso if he could talk to her, 'cause she didn't think we were with some things, so.
Oh, I'm sure some things aren't, but in terms of.
Just let her know.
Discipline or any kind of reprimand for that, since we, unless you have made improvements to the facility, that's my understanding. It might, that might be wrong, um, but like, in terms of, we run into this lot with, with parking lots, people talk about parking lots not being compliant.
Right.
And any new construction will always be compliant. I got a room full of attorneys back here probably shaking their heads, like, you don't know what you're talking about. But, but, um, I, I know that's something we keep tabs on, especially moving forward.
And I'd like to, you know, help with that too, if there's something I can do, I would too on that part. I think that's about all I have.
Okay, is there any other business to be brought to this council? If not, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.